Good afternoon, everybody. The five thirty Agenda Review Session will begin now, followed immediately by the City Council Meeting on September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. We'll have multiple minutes. We'll have court correspondence by the City Clerk. There's no full hearings today. We'll have ordinances on second reading. Number one, capital ordinance providing for various general capital improvements and acquisitions in the city in and by the city of New Brunswick and the county, appropriate meeting, ten million seven hundred seventy-five thousand. Number two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title Ten, vehicles and traffic, specifically for handicap parking and parking zones for handicap persons, including adding eighty-two improvements. Three, an ordinance to amend the redevelopment plan of the city for the New Brunswick new redemanding to redevelopment plan area in the city. Four, an ordinance to approve a long-term tax exemption and financial agreement between the city and NID Holdings Urban Renewal LLC regarding Ninety Bayard Street. Five, ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the City of New Brunswick, Title Two, community and personnel. Six, capital ordinance providing for various joint capital improvements and acquisitions in and by the city appropriated to a one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We then have ordinances upon first reading. One, a bond ordinance providing supplemental appropriation of island knowledge for the water treatment plan improvements project. Two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title Twelve Streets and sidewalks in public places regarding updating permit keys. Three, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title Thirteen, public services. This is in regards to water rates and sewer rates. We then have resolutions one through twenty-eight. One, approve agenda amendments. Two, approve payroll. Three, authorized requests for redeemed tax sale credit certificates. Four, approve chapter one fifty-nine budget insertion of the State of New Jersey PDA for the twenty twenty-five UIF grant. Five, authorize tax collector to pay for overpayments on several tax and utility accounts. Six, authorize acceptance of donation from the Parker Foundation to the New Brunswick Senior Citizen Resource Center. Seven, authorize application and acceptance of grant for fire department with Hungbridge for Safe Community First Responder's Grant Program. Eight, approve request for use of city property requested by Delta Gamma for Ugo Park. Nine, approve request for two closings requested by Ebenezer Baptist Church for Lee Avenue between Omskod and Hale. Ten, approve amendment of resolution R zero one two five six eight for an additional amount of seventy-five thousand with Holland, Longo, Moran, Coran, Dust, and Dufus. This is for the twenty twenty-five special council tax deal. Eleven, approve award of contract with real auction for hosting online tax sales. Twelve, approve amendment of resolution R dash zero six two five six eight for an additional amount of two hundred and twenty thousand with McDonald LLC. This is for the twenty twenty-five engineering support services to water utility. Thirteen, approve award of contracts for truck and equipment replacement parts with Camel Freightliner LLC for five thousand dollars for North Corporation, not to exceed twelve thousand dollars for air brake and equipment doing business at Apollonia Inc., not to exceed thirteen thousand. Fourteen, approve amendment of resolution R dash zero three two five one seven for an additional amount of twenty-four thousand dollars with Macanac LLC. This is for temperature control HVAC maintenance and repairs. Fifteen, approve amendment of resolution R zero six two four two two for additional amount of fifty-six thousand four hundred with French and Perro Associates for engineering services for busy ad water main replacement project. Sixteen, approve amendment of resolution R dash one one two four four two for an additional amount of two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars with McDonald LLC for engineering services for twenty eighteen water main replacement for the water utility. Seventeen, approve amendment of resolution R dash zero nine two five one eight, additional amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars with B and W Construction Company of New Jersey Incorporated for equipment and labor. Eighteen, approve amendment of resolution R dash zero nine two four 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 to extend the contract to one year with Total Security Resources Incorporated. Nineteen, approve authorization to rebid for the project management and reporting for EECBG and this was cut off, ECPI was that, that cut off, vehicles and electric vehicle charging rates. Twenty, approve authorization to advertise for the Jones Ave roadway improvements. Twenty-one, approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance requested by First Property Management Solutions, Inc. Twenty-two, approve amendment of resolution R dash one one two four three three, NJDOT change order number one. Final, this is with Seacoast Construction Company. Twenty-three, approve amendment of resolution R dash zero two two five four nine with DNP Construction LLC for the Ugo Park Rezibo and Restful Innovations. Twenty-four, authorize purchase of water utility of pipe and appliances from Brent Material Company. Twenty-five, approve request for use of city property by Kevin Middleton for a house music festival at Red Park. Twenty-six, resolution is for the New Brunswick Tomorrow's Application to the New Jersey Department of Revenue and Affairs. Twenty-seven, approve resolution authorizing application, acceptance, and execution of grant agreements and funding in the amount of thirty thousand dollars with the Sussex County Office of Arts and History. And twenty-eight, resolution authorizing submission of an application to the Local Financing Board for SUIA, NSA forty, total rent eleven, A dash four point one, to authorize apartment authority of the city of New Brunswick to serve as a redevelopment entity. We then have items by discussion by council, followed by called a comment. Case to remember, our next City Council Agenda Review Session will be Wednesday, October first, twenty twenty-five, at five thirty, and immediately following with the City Council. So here to call to her, please.
Councilmember Escobar, here. Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Gaskins is absent. Councilmember Sephora Lovely.
Here.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Here.
And Council President Anderson is absent.
Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied in the annual notice, which gives sufficient notice to the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed to the City Clerk and replaced on an appropriate bulletin board in the city call and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely the one used to read.
I fight with you, Mr. President of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to take this moment to acknowledge and to invite you all to join in celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, where we honor the cultures, history, and contributions of the Hispanic and Latino communities. This month is more than a celebration. It is a reflection of the diversity that makes our community strong and vibrant. It is this month that, rather, this month is not about, just about history. It's about identity, pride, and legacy. It's about remembering the Latino activists, artists, scientists, and athletes that have made a difference in the United States, but also celebrating the everyday Latino hero from our neighbors, the teachers, the business owners, the artists, and the parents, and the youth who bring culture and creativity to our lives. So as we celebrate the riches of Latino cultures, the vibrant music, colorful foods, colorful traditions, and strong family values that connect generations and communities, let us listen and uplift the voices and stories that are often ignored and unheard. And let us remember that Hispanic heritage is a fabric of American heritage. Thank you.
Second.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Lovely.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Madam Clerk, has correspondence directed to the appropriate departments?
Yes, Council Vice President. The correspondence received by the City Clerk's office was forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you. The public hearing, so we'll move now to ordinances for discussion on second reading, starting with number one, capital ordinance providing for various general capital improvements and acquisitions being in by the city of New Brunswick. In the city, in the county of New York, state of New Jersey, appropriated ten million seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, therefore, to pay for the costs of, do any of my fellow councilpeople have any questions or comments? I'm tired of this ordinance. Mr. Gulus, can I get a bit of an explanation on this, please?
Certainly, Council Vice President and Councilwoman. So the city, on a regular basis, reviews its capital improvements and puts them together into disordinance. Disordinance includes improvements for fire, public facilities, various parks, vehicles, roads, and technology just to top well.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? All right. We are preparing to open the public hearing on this ordinance only, for up to five minutes per person, one time up. If any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, please approach the council.
Good evening, Charlie Brownville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I'll say, first of all, it's good to see some important improvements for the library here. That's a good thing. I also wanted some more information about item F. This is renovation and improvements to the Trust Building to convert art gallery museum event space. I'm familiar with the building. I could feel Brunswick Bank and Trust. Can you tell me a little bit about this museum, when it might open, you know, if it's going to be open to the public, you know, regularly, you know, what's the plan for this? It's a pretty big sell, money.
So this is the city's requirement of a match for grant through the EDA that is supposed to encourage more participation in public areas. So Mr. Dominguez is with us. If he could give us a little more information about the questions that this crowd will ask.
Sure. So as part of the UIF grant that we applied for last year, the background's still being worked out right now. The city's receiving about five point seven million, portion of which will have to match. And it's going into multiple projects downtown to draw more investment and foot traffic into the downtown. The Trust happens to be one of the projects. And my understanding is that the capital inclusion is to cover what may be our portion of the match for the project, unless I'm misunderstanding.
When will it be open? Will it be open to the public regularly?
That project, right now, is still in concept phase, so the program, you know, it will be for public benefit, but right now, I think that's specifically answered Mr. Brown's questions.
Okay, well, you're investing millions of dollars in it. I don't want this to turn out like the firefighters museum, where we were promised you were going to open a museum, and then you never did. So this is a privately owned structure. Public dollars, millions of them, are going to go towards improving it. You can't even assure me that it's going to be open to the public?
I just said it's.
Okay, is it going to be open like by appointment only, regularly, five days a week? Do you have an answer?
Yes, it's all being worked out. It's a federal stuff.
Okay, I just think it's light on the details. I'll move on. I see a lot of references to the technology department. I don't believe that's one of the city's corporate act departments. Can you tell me who leads that department?
The IT division is under administration, so it's under my action.
Okay. The Joyce Kilmer House, you're appropriating fifteen thousand dollars to upkeep and maintain it, but isn't it true that in a later ordinance, you're marking it for potential redevelopment? Are you going to keep the Joyce Kilmer House, or do you want to see it redeveloped?
This ordinance intends to maintain the city's obligations to its public facilities. And that facility is an older building, it means, you know, see if that weren't the aging, but that's a place that other amazes me.
Okay, well, I hope if you're investing public money in it, that you won't allow for it to be destroyed. And then finally, you've got to get some answers on this fire headquarters. So the fire trucks are parked outside. Last meeting, you all approved three hundred plus thousand dollars to build a temporary firehouse in the middle of the street to house the fire trucks that have to be, has to be done before it gets cold, so that the water in them doesn't freeze and damage them. But this makes it seem like you're renovating fire headquarters. At the last meeting, Council President Anderson made it seem like you were going to destroy the fire headquarters. What is the plan for fire headquarters? Are you going to rebuild it at the same site? Are you going to rebuild it at a different site? Or are you just going to repair and improve the existing fire headquarters? I'm still not clear on what the plan is on.
The discussion at the last meeting, talking about the firehouse is business norm. This structure that is going to be on Joyce Kilmer is simply for the outpass. The fire headquarters is still in cooperation for other purposes. For other fire purposes, that's a quick, because the outpass is not there. As it relates to these improvements, the fire headquarters, that's an old building. And we have our amended women who live there and work there. And these improvements would help us to make sure for the few years that we're working to site the new firehouse, that building provides the purpose for those who work there to provide fire safety to the city.
Okay, and then the final item is a temporary structure. That's what was approved last week. But I see it's four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. Last meeting was three hundred sixty-nine thousand. What's the extra? What's the differential on that?
Mr. Padova, which side do you think it is? Sorry.
SS, four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars, construction of temporary structure accommodations. At the last meeting, you approved three hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars for basically the same thing. Please explain the difference.
So what we have, what we did for the last meeting was for that physical structure. As we look to move forward into building a new firehouse, there'll be temporary structures along the way that we'll have to use to accommodate keeping the house in operation while we're making a part of building some additional temporary structures. Thank you.
And what else on this particular ordinance? Seeing none?
Who do you organize?
Second.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Lovely, yes. Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes. We have number two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title Ten, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter ten point twenty, Handicap Parking Sessions, ten point twenty, one zero one zero, Schedule thirty-nine, Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, to add eighty-two rate plates. Do any of my fellow council members have any questions or comments on this? We are preparing to open the public hearing on the ordinance only, for up to five minutes per person, one time up. If any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, please approach the council. Seeing none?
Who do you organize?
Second.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Lovely. Yes. Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes. Moving on to number three, an ordinance to amend the redevelopment plan for the New Brunswick new redemanding to redevelopment plan areas in the city of New Brunswick. Before I ask my fellow councilpeople if they have any questions, Mr. Dominguez, can you give us an overview of this particular ordinance?
Thank you, Council Vice President. This amendment's pretty simple. The only change to the plan that was recently amended a few months ago is simply to allow for the New Brunswick Parking Authority to be the redevelopment agency for the effectuation of the plan. That is the only change to the plan.
Before you sit down, number five is relatively related. Can you, can you just?
Certainly. That is an amendment to the section in our city ordinances that empowers and creates the parking authority, and it adds a line or a paragraph. I forget exactly how much text it adds, but that further enables them by ordinance to empower them to be a redevelopment agency, period. Ordinance number three allows them to act in that capacity for that redevelopment plan specifically.
Great, thank you, Mr. Dominguez. At this point, do any of my fellow council members have any questions or comments? No? As we prepare to open the public hearing on this ordinance only, for up to five minutes per person, one time up. If any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, please approach the council.
Good evening once again, Charlie Brownville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I recognize you have two ordinances relatively on the same topic, and trust me, I could go on for ten minutes about why you should not put the parking authority in charge of a redevelopment project, but I'll try to keep it short. It's a poorly managed agency with a bad track record. You don't need to look any further than the old fresh grocer supermarket to see what happens when the parking authority is their role in redevelopment. It was a miserable failure. One ten minute left. Vote the parking authority a million bucks. Next ten minute left. Vote the parking authority a million bucks. They did a deal with the county, gutted the whole place, and then the county pulled out of the deal. It's sitting vacant, prime real estate right across from the train station. They never did the pedestrian bridge they promised they were going to do. They've been talking about that for ten years. If they can't get a little dinky bridge done, how are they going to deliver on a full-scale redevelopment project? Also, look at their past history with this developer. There's already been a developer chosen because, again, New Brunswick putting the cart before the horse. The developers telling us what they want to do, and AST Development wants to build another huge parking deck as well as office space that the county is supposedly going to occupy. AST Development promised a lot when they did their first deal in New Brunswick. This is a company out of La Valette, nowhere near New Brunswick, and they basically said, we're going to build two buildings on the parking deck. They built one building on the parking deck. I believe they were delinquent on some of their financial obligations to the city. And so a decade or more later, when they were finally ready to build that second building, they built a totally different thing than what they had originally promised, and they did some clever, clever shell game with different LLCs so that they could get out from under the failures of their first operation. So putting the parking authority and AST Development in charge of this is going to be something the city regrets. We already have redevelopment agency. It's our housing authority. We also have a track record of having projects that were managed by the Middlesex County Improvement Authority as redevelopment agency. If the county actually wants to do this, pressure the county to be the redevelopment agency through the MCIA. As I mentioned in the planning board, I think some people were there, you know, there's a past history of the MCIA delivering on projects in New Brunswick. There's a past history of the housing authority. It's a little bit mixed, but there's no history of the parking authority successfully managing a redevelopment project. In fact, I'd get to find an example of any parking authority in New Jersey ever managing a redevelopment project. So I'm just respectfully asking you to table this, vote no tonight. Please do not put the parking authority in charge of this critical piece of property. There's so much that we could actually get for New Brunswick if we use this property well. But if we go along with the parking authority's plan, guess what we're going to get? Another giant parking deck across from the other giant parking deck. We deserve a lot better here. And this council, you're in a position to make an important decision today. I hope you won't make the wrong decision by putting the parking authority in charge. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Grayson Gilwell, resident of New Brunswick. That's gotta be, I gotta, I gotta know that y'all can't vote on that. The New Brunswick Parking Authority is bleeding this town dry. Bleeding and dry, okay? Our streets are empty. People stop coming to this town because of the parking authority. They need not do anything else in this town but be chatty. I, as an individual, have paid three thousand dollars in parking tickets in this town. I live on a street that isn't even signed right, and people ticket them. Giving the New Brunswick Parking Authority any additional power, any additional ability is an absolute failure. And I want y'all to, no, I mean that with respect, no disrespect. I don't know how you want to take that. It's a failure. People stop coming to this town because of them. We have to fix that. They can't be allowed to do really anything else. I don't know what else to say. I go to different towns and talk about being from New Brunswick. People say, I don't go there because I can't get parking, and when I do get parked, I get a ticket. It's insane. Don't just talk to me. Talk to the business owners. Talk to the business owners, right? Because I've worked at plenty of these restaurants, right? And I've seen how many people have stopped coming to this town because of them. If we want more commerce in this town, we have to check the New Brunswick Parking Authority, not give it any more additional power or ability to do anything else. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none?
No.
Second.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson. Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Lovely.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes. Four, we have an ordinance to approve a long-term tax exemption and financial agreement between the city of New Brunswick and NID Holdings Urban Renewal LLC regarding Ninety Bayard Street, Lot twenty, Lots twelve, thirteen, fourteen point oh one, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty point oh one. Do any of my fellow council members have any questions for the public to answer? All right, so we're preparing to open this up for public hearing, for up to five minutes per person, once I am up. If any member of the public wishes to speak on this ordinance, please approach the council.
Charlie Brownville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I want folks to understand, this is a proposed, I'll call it skyscraper, right? It's twenty-some stories tall, right there, corner of fire and Kirkpatrick. And this is a project that's been in the works for a decade or more, probably two decades now. And I just wanted to ask if anyone did the calculation to see approximately how much they were paying taxes, if they paid normal full taxes like the rest of New Brunswick does?
I don't think Mr. Dominguez would have that, you don't have that on your do. Mr. Council President, no, that those calculations were not wrong.
What might they be paying under this discount? This is a tax exemption, so they'll pay an annual service charge, sometimes referred to as a pilot payment of taxes. What are they going to be on the book for? Has that been negotiated?
Do you have an answer?
We, the parameters of the agreement have not been finalized, but the number should be, based on the ten percent revenue criteria, a hair over one point two million dollars a year in revenue to the city.
Thank you.
Okay, so they're getting a discount. The discount's going to last thirty years, correct? Yes.
I believe so, yes, right? Thirty years?
Yes. Okay, and what is in it for New Brunswick? Why are you giving them the discount?
You just heard one of the reasons right there in terms of the benefits. Mr. Dominguez, do you want to speak in terms of the benefits?
Sure. Thank you, Council President. So we get some positive redevelopment near the train station, about three hundred and thirty-some odd units. I forget the exact number. I think it's three thirty-seven, three thirty-eight, something like that. Sixty-seven affordable housing units. Twenty percent of the building will be affordable housing. We will get some additional commercial and office space. The building is fully parked out, and so it doesn't even have parking variance, which is exceptional for downtown. And nice urban density near the train station, plus affordable housing, mixed use, over a million dollars a year revenue. I don't see a downside here.
I agree.
I just wanted to get it on the record that they're going to do twenty percent affordable. Is that, that's correct? Not ten percent, twenty percent.
That's what I heard, yes.
Okay. What assurances do you have that they're actually going to go through with it? Because they've been talking about this for, like I said, a long, long time.
It's been worked out. I have Dayton and Benham and people working on this to seal out, so we'll clean it up as it goes.
Thanks for your time.
Anyone else on this ordinance?
Just hope for clarification. This is another luxury condo that's going to be put up, or is it just going to be like an apartment building?
It's in, it's in mixed use.
Mixed, mixed use, but the housing will be primarily.
The housing will be three hundred and something apartments, eighty percent of them market rate, twenty percent for them.
Okay. Again, building more things in New Brunswick? I'm not opposed to it. We want people to stay in this town, right? We want people to be invested in this.
We want people to be invested in this town, right? If we're gonna just build another really expensive building that some college kids are gonna rent out and then not come back to, or somebody from Johnson &amp; Johnson is going to live here for a year, right, and pay Jersey City prices, Hoboken prices, right, to live in New Brunswick. They're gonna live here for a year, and then they're gonna leave, right? Because that is what happens. Are we trying to build a community here, right? Is the goal community, or do we just want some more money? Of course we want more money! We need more money, right, to do things, to build things for public services, right? Taxes, right? But what does it benefit if we never build community? Because people are paying prices to live here, and we're talking about the market rate, right? But we're not talking about what's affordable. Oh, what's worthwhile, living 45 minutes outside of New York, when you just commute right on down. Again, are you, do, you guys live in this town, I want you to talk to the young professionals that come from Johnson &amp; Johnson, that come from Robert Wood Johnson, right? I've had to do it. I bartended in this town, been a, worked in a restaurant in this town, 12, maybe 15 years at this point, long time. I have watched people come into my jobs every day, and then all of a sudden they disappear. So many of them, "What happened here? Where'd you go? Where'd you go?" Well, it didn't make sense to me to pay what I'm paying to live in New Brunswick, where my street is empty, right? Where if I wanna drive somewhere, well, I can, I can pay for this in Manhattan, that is what they say. I can pay for this in Jersey City or Hoboken. How do we build community? How do we get people to stay here? And it's not just building, uh, the, the Bell Labs and hoping that that's gonna change something. We gotta figure out a way to get people here that wanna stay here. That's my opinion, I don't know.
Thank you. Anyone else on this order? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmembers Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes. We, uh, we have an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick Title II Administration and Personal. But, uh, Mr. Lewis, can you give a little explanation on this before?
I have five questions.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, right. Holliday. Right there. No, no, you, you mentioned it enough, yeah, thank you. Uh, my, my fellow council members have any questions or comments? Alright, uh, so we're preparing to open the public hearing on this ordinance only, up to five minutes per person, one time up, if any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, please approach the council.
It's me again, I'll be brief, but, uh, I did wanna let you know that the parking authority is unfortunately a very mismanaged agency. I have more to share because, uh, I raised an issue to you about the eligibility of parking enforcement officers to actually be issuing tickets around town, and there's many of them who are not appointed by the Board, uh, of that authority, but just today, I learned that none of their parking enforcement officers have the required eligibility determination signed by the police chief. So all the tickets they're issuing are illegitimate. These are, uh, this is a huge mistake that the parking authority made. Their main function, right, their main function is having these enforcement officers go around and raise revenue through the most regressive means possible, hitting people up with these expensive tickets. You gave them an increase to get six bucks instead of four bucks for every ticket, and we're paying like 52 or 47 bucks a ticket, and they've messed it up royally because they haven't followed the, the basic tenants of the law. So please, I know you've already voted once to do it, stop it. Do not allow them to be in charge of a redevelopment project. They can't even handle their basic responsibilities as it is. That's all.
Thank you.
Good evening, this is Dr. Phil Bogart. Um, I also have not had good experiences with the parking authority, and I can't even imagine putting them in charge of a redevelopment project. Can you see what a mess the parking decks are in the whole parking situation? Um, $57 on the overtime meter. I don't know if anybody else has noticed, it's a little hard to guess sometimes how much time you're gonna use on the meter, and of course, you know, then when everybody, even, um, uh, if a meter is broken, then you're just expected to use the app. Everybody doesn't have the app. So if the meter is broken, you can't, it won't take the card, and you can't put any money in it, you're still on the hook, and, and it's just, it's, I came down the other day, so it just, I had to get a special envelope to mail something in, and I thought I could pull into this lot for five minutes to run to the post office, because there was no on-street parking, and no, I was wrong. You cannot sit in this lot for even five minutes for free. I was told to go to a parking deck, which starts at $4 for an hour, so that I could run into the post office and get a ticket. It's true, a lot of times, you know, it's just easier to run over to Holland Park where you can pull up right next to a little business that you're gonna go to and park free on the street. People have to be losing money from this, except the parking authority, they're making a lot of money. It's just, it's, it's so obvious to everybody that it's such a, like, a money grab at our expense. Like, you know, I don't know, happening with them, that they feel like they have to make up so much money. Well, I do kinda know what happens, but it's not...
May I cut you off for a second? This is about the ordinance, I've given you some leeway, if you can bring it back to the ordinance, we'd have to hear from you, otherwise we could hear you repel the public.
No on the parking authority. Back to you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmembers Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes. Then we have capital ordinance providing for various voluntary capital improvements and acquisitions in and by the city of New Brunswick, and the county of New Jersey, incorporating $2,150,000, therefore can pay for the costs thereof. Do any of my fellow council members have any questions or comments on this ordinance? Alright, we are preparing to open the public hearing on this ordinance only, up to five minutes per person, one time up, if any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, please approach the council.
If you have some questions, can I, um, Mr. Dominguez, can you tell me a little about this ordinance?
Sure. Uh, so Mr. Council, this, uh, this is another capital improvement that, uh, resides in the stormwater utility, it has a, uh, has its own ability to, of course, to borrow money into, to do projects. Um, this is, this is exciting, this is exercising this new utility, and the first thing that is in the plan is to develop a master plan study that will inventory, uh, we know what we have, but of all inventory documents, start to do some long-term planning for stormwater infrastructure. Uh, the second thing we have is general improvements for that infrastructure as, as around New Brunswick, you see, we are doing a lot of underground utility work, and when we open up the street, this will provide us the funding to be able to place the infrastructure that we see in, in this storm. Uh, and the third is for equipment that will help us to use less salt, uh, and, and salt is, salt gets into our freshwaterways, it becomes very pricey for a customer to treat as a water utility. It's also not, not great for, a little great to work out. So those are the three things at this point.
Thank you. Again, I'll, I'll open up the public hearing for this ordinance only, only up to five minutes per person, one time up, if any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, please approach the council. Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes. Moving on to ordinances on first reading, we have number one, modernists providing a supplemental appropriation of $5 million for a water treatment plant improvements project in and by the city of New Brunswick, and authorizing the issuance of $5 million bonds or notes of the city to finance the costs thereof.
Move the ordinance, set it down Wednesday, October 1st, 5:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes. Here we move on to number two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick Title 12 Streets and Sidewalks and Public Places, Chapter 12, 008, Street and Sidewalk Excavations Regarding Updating the Term of Use.
Move the ordinance, set it down Wednesday, October 1st, 5:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmembers Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes. And we have an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick Title 13 Public Services, Chapter 13.04, Water Service Systems, Section 13.04.010, and Chapter 13.08, Sewer Service Systems, Sections 13.08.340, Schedule A, Schedule of Charging Water Mates and Sewer Mates.
Move the ordinance, set it down Wednesday, October 1st, 5:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmembers Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes. We're moving on to resolutions, we have resolutions, one through twenty-eight. Do any of, before I, I ask questions, do any of my fellow council members have any questions or comments on the resolutions?
Uh, Mr. Dominguez, can you speak on number four?
Uh, Vice President, this is the, um, this is by budget action that the Finance Department has to undertake when we get grant funding, um, it needs to be, uh, my, my understanding is it's sort of quasi-amendment to the budget to insert, uh, grant funds that come in after budgets are adopted, to plug it in so that it exists into the budget system and our city budget, budget.
Thank you.
I was gonna say that. I was...
You said it, boss.
I'm just doing what they give me here.
Alright. Um... Mr. Lewis, can you talk about number six?
Okay, number six allows us to accept this amendment from Parker Foundation, um, Parker has been a real partner with the city, and, uh, this allows us to be able to forward that amendment.
Thank you. And I'm asking, Mr. Chairman, can you talk about Tony?
Um, I believe through this, the last resolution, uh, under the change of, uh, we see final piece, uh, of the two rest ordinances that were adopted, uh, here to see, with respect to, um, the authority, for the parking authority to have redevelopment authority, an application has to be made to the local finances, and that's what that resolution does, it requests that authority. But in light of fact, we just adopted that ordinance.
Thank you. Alright, at this time, we're preparing to open the public, uh, we have a meeting on the public hearing on the resolutions only, up to five minutes per person, one time up, if any members of the council on the resolutions, please approach the council.
Good evening once again, Charlie Brownfield, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I want to ask about the total security resources group. There are, of course, the, uh, security staff that patrols downtown New Brunswick, but also, is this from, like, the library? What, nobody talking about? Ends in five, five, four. I wanted to ask, who owns this company? Who's in charge there?
Mr. Lawrence, do you have an answer?
No. Dr. Ludwig? Dr. Ludwig here?
Yes.
I don't know if he has that answer, but...
No, I have, I know they do a good job, they, uh, have this number of problems, but who, who owns the company? I, that is not, not the company I own.
Council Vice President, that, and all the procurement for services has to go through standard process, so we do have that information in the purchase and offer that I provide to you to access.
Great, thank you. Can I, can I just ask, who is our, you know, highest level contact at the company? If something is an issue with their services, their staff, who does the city have to address that with? Is there a person that feels complaints or...
I'm gonna ask Dr. Ludwig, if he would like to talk about who he talks to there.
We don't have the name off the top of my head, uh, I have dealt with, um, their regional persons, uh, I guess it's the fact that we haven't had any complaints or, or problems, so it doesn't come to mind immediately.
I just wanna clarify, because I'm trying to understand your questions apparently. Are you talking about a person at the library that was, they challenged, complained about the security or anything? Who in the library would be the person that they could talk to, and that person would then get in touch with the security company, or is it somebody directly to the security?
The library, somebody within the company to complain to if there's an issue with their performance?
Well, I would say that, because it's a company, I would, I would say that whoever is in the, you know, downtown area, there should be maybe the city center, who is the lone contractor, would be the person. In the library, I'm sure somebody in the library should be that contact person. Personally, I think that that would be the best way to handle those situations, instead of directly to the...
You're asking for the name of the person in the company?
Correct, yeah, yeah. So, and I'll, I'll just explain, I, I, you know, had an issue with them, um, you know, gentleman on the street asked me for change, I gave him a buck, I moved on with my day, and I noticed that the TSRG security guard hopped out with a little golf cart and started bothering this guy, because he had asked me for change, and I started recording because he seemed like the guard was escalating things, and, uh, as I approached, the security person, uh, guard, whatever you wanna call him, hollered at me, he said, "Stop recording, stop recording." Big mistake, right? It's a free country, and I'm, I don't take kindly to that kind of thing. Who is he to yell at me? Um, I asked him his name, he refused to give his name, his partner also refused to give his name. Are these officers supposed to, are these guards or whatever they are, are they supposed to give their name when asked?
Uh, I can find out for you, but at this point in time, this is not specific on the ordinance. I will say that I'm aware that you did make your complaints to City Market, who is in charge of the security, and they're, they're investigating it, right? So that I would ask, uh, let's see what they come up with first, and then we'll take it from there.
Yeah, I just say for accountability, you know, you should have a name tag, or somebody asks your name, you should give your name. Um, for what it's worth, I immediately brought it to the attention of TSRG. I called them, I left a message, they called me back, a gentleman named Bruce Richard took my complaint over the phone, I said, "I have a video, I have, uh, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions you have." That was a week ago, I never heard back. So I went to the city center this morning and, uh, raised that complaint politely to the board there, they, you know, heard me out, and I'm raising it to you and cautioning you, um, about this company. We don't even know who's in charge or who to complain to, um, and these folks are just, you know, not even giving their names, um, that, that creates a situation where, you know, maybe most of them are doing things right, but if you have one person who's a bad fit for the job or doesn't have proper training, and they can't be held accountable because they wanna be secret agents and not give their names, that's a problem. Um, and I'm encouraging the council to take this on and address this, um, and maybe hold off on this today.
Thank you. Anyone else on the resolutions? Seeing none? Second.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes. Actually, um, I do need to amend my, my, my vote, uh, to the same number of six.
Do you need a bit? Do I need a...
So we're moving on to a final discussion, um, if I ask you, does everybody want to have any side of what they wish to say? Seeing none? I do wanna take this, uh, this point in time to say that, uh, with respect to the
I do want to take this, uh, this point in time to say that, uh, with respect to the case of Deborah Terrell, we are aware that the police body cam footage has been made public. But the investigation is still ongoing, so therefore we cannot comment further on the matter. As we previously stated, we recognize the tragic loss of one of the Brunswick elders and further recognize the families and the community's desire for the investigation to be conducted thoroughly and with expediency. Therefore, after deliberations with fellow council members on the matter, at this point in time, I will entertain a motion to draft a resolution asking the New Jersey State Attorney General to expedite this investigation.
Motion, second. Councilmember Estebor?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes. So, Mr. Channing, this will be, um, at the request of the council, the vote that was just taken, as the resolution has been adopted, I prepare a appropriate formal resolution. It will be incorporated to consent agenda as well as tonight's meeting minutes. And, uh, it will be forwarded by the clerk, uh, to the Attorney General's office.
Great, thank you very much for the work. All right, uh, we're preparing to open the meeting to public comment. For up to five minutes per person, one time up. If any members of the public wish to speak during this public comment for this meeting, please approach the council by email.
Um, let me just say two things. Um, the Deborah Terrell incident is really unfortunate and I hate it. My point on it is that it really sucks. The Brunswick, I believe, has done a really good job at changing their peace force around. I was here with Harry Little Tista. Um, and it's really just a tragic situation. And I do want to know even to the cops that are here, like, I appreciate the cops here. We have, we're, I've been in a lot of cities, a lot of crappy cops. We have a lot of good cops here. And I know that doesn't change anything for me. I just want to know, like, we in the community are heartbroken in both ways because we look at these cops as people who protect us. So it's, it's, I, I didn't come from all the Deborah Terrell speaks because there's a lot of people here. There's a lot going on. I need to get lost and all that. But it is a community loss. And the question is, is how do we build that in the community? How do we keep the trust that has been built in this, in this city with our cops? And how do we maintain that outside of the investigation? What, what are we doing amongst us to make sure that that relationship is cool? I, I, like, I love a lot of the cops here, man. Like, I look them in the face. I say, "How was that?" A lot of them, you know? So I just want to leave that as food for thought. And I know you guys deal with a lot of day-to-day and city stuff. But the only thing that I want to say, this might be divisive amongst people. I'm happy to have drove past this building and not seen our American flag flock in my step. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment?
Good evening, my name is Eric Spear. I'm a resident of Kaneburg. Although the following comment, uh, questions speak to the tragic death of Ms. Deborah Terrell from August eighth, two thousand twenty-five. I'm not asking the council to comment on an ongoing investigation. As the council is aware, New Jersey's Arrive Together program is a statewide initiative that pairs law enforcement officers to serve by mental health crisis bringers to respond to behavioral health crises. Program's goal is to de-escalate situations, ensure safety for individuals in crisis and the community, and connect those in need with appropriate mental health and social services instead of traditional arrest or use of force responses. What actions are the council taking to ensure that the mayor increases the police department's participation in this program?
Um, we can, I can definitely have a discussion with the police and see what will come up. And I can get through those answers for next meeting. Uh, as someone who's worked in the field of mental health for quite some time, I am fully aware of the need for resources. Not just monetary resources, but actual specialist, mental health specialists, because there is a shortage of people going into the mental health field. And so the answers aren't easy because of the lack of resources. And the best that I can do is I've been championing this before, but continuing to champion trying to raise those, uh, those resources. And so it might not be the answer that people might hear, but best be sure that I will continue. And I'm sure some of my fellow council members will continue to push for more resources in the mental health field.
Thank you.
Hi, Anna. This is Dr. Dr. Clark. I would first of all like to follow up on a, a previous, uh, proposed resolution that came to you guys from the Environmental Commission. It concerned the New Jersey, uh, super, super fine, climate super fine this time. And, uh, I followed up on it a couple of times and didn't really get any answer. Is it a reason why it, it never came on the agenda?
Uh, well.
It was discussed and the, uh, on the, the council, uh, you, you couldn't go to, you know, amongst the consensus of the council?
Was not to even put it on the agenda and it's very, it was interesting because.
We also did support the resolution. You may continue.
So, yeah, the public would like to see that discussion and see who votes for, for these things that seem like just common sense. I just can't see the downside of it. Our state senator, um, is, was a big, uh, proponent of it and, and, you know, really strongly, when we went to Trenton, uh, uh, and I want to say begged, he was strongly urging us to get our cities and towns to pass these resolutions. It helps them move the legislation, uh, you know, when committee people are blocking it or something. If they can see, you know, dozens of communities around the state. And I ask because now there's another resolution that I'm, uh, that I want to bring, uh, to your attention. Communities are making resolutions in support of the Immigrant Trust Act. And that's actually what I was here to speak about tonight and many of my, uh, fellow, um, attendees. Um, this would codify and, uh, actually expand, um, the Attorney General's directive regarding the safety of our immigrant members of our community. And again, Senator Smith is, uh, is on board. Our legislators, I guess you know, um, Representative Egan, Representative Danielson, they are co-sponsors of this bill in the House. In the legislature, legislature. Um, yes. So we, as the Brunswick residents, would want you to do this resolution as a show of support for the immigrant community and specifically this bill, which would, um, give people some measure of peace of mind because it does have specific provisions for hours of worship schools. Um, but also just because it shows that you have the community members back, um, that support. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And we are receipt of the email, uh, giving information. And so we'll take it under advisement and we'll go back to you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mickey Deener. I'm a resident of Parkland Park, but I spent probably most of my childhood here in New Brunswick. Um, I'm here as part of the group of organizations. You can see members up here, um, New Labor, most of them in their orange shirts. And also an organization called DIRE, which stands for deportation, immigration, response, ECO. And we're here, as Lindy just said, to ask you to, uh, to put together, uh, adopt a resolution supporting the New Jersey Immigrant Trust Act. And I think you've seen, seen four resolutions of it. New Jersey is one of the most diverse states in the nation of immigrants. Nearly one in four of our state's residents is an immigrant. Ten percent of U.S. citizen children in New Jersey live at least with an undocumented, uh, family member. And these are not abstract statistics. There are neighbors, our friends, families, uh, parents of classmates of our children. And as you must know, the legislature's been sitting on this act for some time, probably around now, based on the fact that addressing immigration isn't a good look for a campaign season, which is very unfortunate. But the urgency for the act is clear. The actions of the current administration, which only started months ago, are having a devastating effect on communities in the state and the nation. We must resist these efforts of the current administration with every tool we have, including the Immigrant, Immigrant Trust Act. As Lindy was saying, the ITA provides a direct and necessary response. Since 2019, the Attorney General's Immigration Trust Directive has been a proven success. The public officials agree it's kept our communities safer by enabling immigrants to report crimes without fear of being separated from their families. The ITA would codify this successful directive into state law, which is incredibly important since we don't know who the next Attorney General is going to be and whether he or she would continue that directive. Uh, the ITA crucially would also expand these protections. It would ensure that a visit to the DMV, enrolling a child in school, or seeking health care could not lead to private information being shared with ICE, putting our families in jeopardy. By passing this resolution, you will, uh, be choosing to maintain the stability of your community, protect all your residents, and join a growing chorus of municipalities across New Jersey, calling on the state legislature and the governor to pass the Immigrant Trust Act into law with all deliberate speed. So we do implore you to take up this resolution and pass it at your earliest possible convenience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, do I just start talking or?
If you can give your name and address.
Oh, of course. Uh, my name is Troy Sharkey Biggnapiano. Uh, I'm not a resident of New Brunswick. I, uh, come from the couple of towns over in South River, but I have been in New Brunswick plenty of times. Um, I'm, I don't have anything written or prepared, so I may not sound as eloquent as I would like or as eloquent as the previous speakers have been. But I did just want to voice my support in favor of a resolution, passing a resolution in favor of the Immigrant Trust Act. Uh, I don't want to really mince words here. It's kind of scary what's going on in this country right now. People are being taken off of the streets. They're being taken in their jobs. And it's not necessarily the case that these people are here undocumented, right? There are cases of people who have a legal right to be here, right? Who have the valid paperwork, who are being taken and sent to prisons across the country, right? I could name one off the top of my head right now. So she, a, uh, community organizer and a resident of New Jersey here at a time, who is a DACA recipient, who was stopped at a, um, I believe it was an airport and taken to a prison in El Paso by ICE. Uh, and the judge recently ruled that she was not being kept there lawfully, but she's still being detained here. We're living in unprecedented times, is what I'm trying to get at right now. And it's extremely scary. Um, it's a concern that a growing number of people are having, right? And the public opinion on what's happening right now is quickly going down under the water, which is why I want to just break up to the fact that with an ongoing election this year, with a potential change in how our state is run, right, at the executive level, uh, we need to have decisive action, right? And we need to have overwhelmingly strong support for legislation like this to restore some sense of, of, um, comfort, right? Of peace, right? Of calm. That we, that people who may not be here as full legal citizens can trust the public institutions that are supposed to serve them without fear of incidentally, quote unquote, reporting themselves to ICE, right? We, we need that sort of division, right? We need that sort of boundary where we can say, "You are still here. You still have, you are still entitled to the various public services and necessities that the state can provide," right? And I appreciate hearing, "Oh, we've received this email. We've heard this. We're considering this." But what I would really appreciate and what I think many of the people behind me would appreciate is a definitive, at least resolution, or at least a here on an agenda for having it be spoken out into words. And I hope that this can be expedited. I hope this can be done as quickly as possible. This Trust Act is not new. It's been sitting on here for many years now. Uh, and I'd rather it not go stagnant at a time like this. I think this is the time to, to voice support for it, right? And say it, say to the governor, the state senate, the legislators, that New Brunswick, a very, very large town, right? A city, uh, is in support of this act that needs to be passed because we don't know exactly what the future holds. And I think that there are plenty of people here who are entitled to the same services and the same protections as anyone else in this country. And I'd like New Jersey to at least stand at a high standard for such a thing. Uh, thank you.
My name is Amanda Dominguez. I was born and raised in New Brunswick, still currently living in New Brunswick. I have three children who go to New Brunswick Public Schools. I work right here on Patterson Street. And I live with some of you, I think, in Rutgers Village, actually. You should have Rutgers Village Facebook page. I've seen your names pop up here and there. Um, Mayor Cahill is only two blocks away from my house. I go to school at Rutgers University. I'm a third-year PhD student in language education. I live here and I love New Brunswick and I love my community. I'm a community member and I'm a community activist. I'm here as part of the organization New Labor Today to push for the Immigrant Trust Act resolution. Um, if you receive more than one email, I have one of the emails that you guys received about the Immigrant Trust Act resolution. And I'm here to put it, I guess, a little bit more into perspective. We've had a lot of ICE activity in New Brunswick. Um, I did talk to, uh, I believe the chief of police. I don't know the titles for all of them. They said, "No, ICE is not in New Brunswick. That's not true." I have names, dates, people, times, and I'm willing to share that with you all if you want to get a good picture about what's been going on here in New Brunswick. Um, the community is scared. The community is scared. I did speak to Mayor Cahill via email, um, a few months ago, and he assured me that New Brunswick police would not be cooperating, you know, with, um, ICE agents. But that is not stopping ICE agents from going in and doing cool things in our neighborhoods. I was here with one of our first ICE incidents was in February where they took a grandmother from Lickbridge Avenue in New Brunswick, 5:00 PM on a Sunday evening. She has high blood pressure. She has diabetes. They took her from in front of her home and she was not allowed to grab her medication. They did not advise her family as to where she was taken. The only reason why the family found her is because they had the Track My iPhone app and they tracked it to the Newark Detention Center. Two days later, she was moved to Louisiana. Family can't get to her. Lawyer can't get to her. And she had an open immigration case where she was checking in with immigration every month. And she's been in the country for over thirty years, right? I was on a call the other day with the Domestic Violence Coalition in New Brunswick. You know, the annual march is coming up in October. Um, New Labor members will be present and they were saying, "Please make sure that we have some of the med students come out so they can do the blood pressure and diabetes testing for folks because people are afraid to go to the hospital and people are afraid to go to the clinics because they don't want ICE getting into those databases." For years, community organizers like myself have been telling people to file taxes and to use their ITINs, right, to pay taxes. And the community members have been listening. And now what? Now that database is at risk. The Trump administration wants to use that database, right, to get to people. So they have a valid fear in thinking of, "If I go to the hospital, will they use that against me? If I register my kids for school, will they use that against me? If I fill out this lease paper, can they use that against me?" People stop coming to certain classes and health and safety trainings that we offer here in, at New Labor across the state. We have three centers in Newark, Lakewood, and New Brunswick, and people don't come because they're afraid to do anything that is considered like extracurricular. They have a real fear. And so I think in this community, in Hispanic Heritage Month, it would be a lovely thing to do, to say, "Yes, we stand with our community and we are going to pass the Immigrant Trust Act resolution here in New Brunswick." And if we can continue to get different communities to pass it, then we're going to have more strength when we try to pass it statewide. Because we don't know what the governor race holds. We're only, we're not even into year one of this administration. We don't know what three more years means for us, right? So if we can take this step in the right direction, then we'll have more power to pass it at the state level. So I urge you all to take it seriously. I appreciate you said that you got the email and you guys are going to review the resolution. But it'd be wonderful if we can get this done during Hispanic Heritage Month, um, and celebrate our diverse community. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, hi. My name is Halyne Nae and I'm pediatrician, social worker, with twenty-eight years of experience working at St. Peter's University Hospital. The community sees many children with serious depression, anxiety, sleep and eating disorders, attention deficit, behavioral disorders, or often trauma, trauma related. Let me tell you about some of the young patients I've seen at St. Peter's. An eight-year-old boy who stopped eating and in worst way had to go to the emergency room to receive dehydrating. A twelve-year-old girl became severely depressed with a lot of grief and needed counseling. Um, young children with sleep disorders are afraid to go to sleep since they were fearful during the night. A teen girl who said she hates her life. She had suicidal ideation, stopped going to school, she needed medication and counseling. All of these children have one thing in common. One of their parents or grandparents was detained by ICE. Immigration and detention disrupts not just the lives of those detained, but the lives of family members, including innocent children, many of whom actually are citizens of our country. These kids suffer from loss of income, stability, housing issues. They have less food, less medical care, and often less schooling in the cases of older children who have to drop out of school because a parent is not able to support the family and they have to help support their family. It causes a great deal of stress for everyone in the community, especially the kids. It's not the children's fault. Many of them were born here. They're citizens. And there was a study of childhood trauma called the ACE Study. It showed the adverse events in childhood and of course, a cha, a parent being detained or a parent being taken away. And of course, a parent being detained or a parent being taken away affects children's health in the future. And it leads to poor health, mental health issues. It increases addiction, poor academic performance, and decreased life expectancy. There's just not enough counselors, therapists, or psychologists to go around to care for these children. And these children are our future. Some kids have stopped going to school. Parents are fearful of taking them there. Children have stopped taking their kids to the doctor. We have less visits at the clinic because the parents are afraid that they'll be picked up. Children deserve to live their lives without fear that a parent or a grandparent will be taken away from them. Their parents are working hard, support the families in jobs that are difficult, tedious, dangerous, often putting in very long hours. They care about their future. They'll sacrifice everything to help their kids grow up to be fully functioning citizens of our country. Allowing this to go on unabated in such diverse communities such as New Brunswick is just unacceptable. We need safe zones at schools, at hospitals, to allow the children to get the education, medical care they deserve. And of course, we need to pass the Immigration Trust Act, because our children need and deserve protection from the future. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Oleg Metz. I live in Highland Park. Lived here for fifteen years in New Brunswick. I just want to first start by saying I want to express my solidarity with the family of Deborah Terrell, who was gunned down inexcusably by the New Brunswick police. So I really hope that the officer who was involved with this is actually prosecuted to the full extent of the law. I am also a volunteer with Dyer, which is mentioned earlier. It stands for deportation and immigration responsive people. I coordinate the Dyer hotline, which receives calls from people who see ICE in their neighborhoods, from people who have loved ones detained in ICE detention, and from others with immigration issues. Since Trump took office, we have received hundreds of calls from families torn apart and terrorized by ICE. And we've had quite a few calls from people in New Brunswick, from families who have a member detained. We've also had a number of calls from people who have seen ICE and want help. So it's very, very present in New Brunswick. Nothing can't be just ignored and pretended that it's not happening here. So I also just want to explain a little bit more about the Immigrant Trust Act, because it will prevent local police and government agencies from becoming arms of ICE. Everyone needs to know that the police, hospitals, schools, and other government agencies are doing their jobs and not collaborating with ICE's violations of human rights. This legislation recognizes that government agencies will need to respond when ICE provides a proper judicial warrant. But of course, they generally never have a judicial warrant. And so without a judicial warrant, these agencies will not have to expend their time, budget, or staffing to just try to meet the whims of immigration agents. So I just want to bring up that we cannot wait any longer and let this critical piece of legislation languish in Trenton. We need our representatives at every level of government, including right here, to put pressure on Trenton to act and to act now. The leadership in Trenton has not even allowed a committee hearing on the Immigrant Trust Act, in spite of many, many sponsors. We know right now the federal government plans to further ramp up ICE arrests. More raids. In fact, they plan to open for DIPS with three thousand beds for ICE detention. We simply cannot allow this legislative session to end without passage of this bill. And if that happens and it doesn't pass, honestly, we'll know who's responsible. It's going to be both parties. Democrats just as responsible for that as the Republicans, if not more so. So what I'd really like to know, we'd like a local resolution passed, as many other cities, I think about twenty or so towns, have recently passed a new resolution. We'd like to see you all do that. So I'd like to know tonight whether there are members of this council who will commit to actually press for the passage of the Immigrant Trust Act, press the leadership in Trenton yourselves individually, and also who here is willing to help put together to pass a resolution here in New Brunswick, who mean a lot to the whole community? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, William M. Construmalos. My name is Alejandro Paramillo. And I have a long history here in New Brunswick. You know, my wife, myself, my children. We spent a lot of years studying and working here in New Jersey, I mean, in New Brunswick, and being part of the community. I am a member of the New Brunswick CosAcha chapter here in New Brunswick that we work very closely with our partners from New Labor, Dyer, and others to protect the immigrant community. And I'm not going to repeat what the other speakers say. You know, I agree one hundred percent. But I just want to give you what we have heard from immigrant members, immigrant community members. Right? Every day, when they woke up, before they go out to their workplace or take their children to school, they look out the window. They look if there is a non-card park there with tainted windows. And if there is none, they walk out, and they are always on the watch. When they are going to the school, when they are going to the workplace, always being on guard to see where they see us. They do that when they leave. They do that when they take their children to school, when they pick them up, when they go to work, when they leave, when they go to shop. And many of them are afraid to go out. To go out and shop, to go out to a restaurant, because you never know. So this has a lot of impact in the mental health of the community, especially children, as the previous speaker said. For example, my wife is a clinical social worker. And she has seen children being stressed, being depressed, being worried, don't want to go to school, don't want to go, because they are afraid of us. They are afraid that their parents are going to be taken. And it's a reality that a lot of those families, even my family, right, that anytime someone comes on the front door and knocks, we are thinking, "Who is it?", right? We just don't go and open the door, you know, to welcome the visitors. "Who is it?", because we don't know who is going to be on the side of the door next time. So we ask you, you know, that you support passing that resolution. And not only passing the resolution, but use your power as representatives of New Brunswick to push and pressure our legislators, you know, to pass the Immigration Trust Act. And also here in New Brunswick, you know, stand with our community. You know, we expect you to speak up when ICE comes and speak up in defense of our community. Because if I see that the community is organized and the representatives are here to protect them and speak on their behalf, they are going to think twice, you know, when they are planning their race and coming. So we expect you to support this resolution and also to stand up with our community. Thank you.
My name is Clifton Smith. I just really got a question. And the question and concern that I wanted to ask, do we have a community liaison?
What do you mean by community liaison?
Like someone, like a reputable within between the community and with you guys that the community trusts, that you guys trust when we have these different issues and things that's going on, to help assist one another? Because I've seen everyone that came up and speaking from the different organizations, everyone saying different things. And even when the meeting was going on, not just here, but the last time I was at other places. I know there's a lot of stuff you guys can't say. There's a lot going on here. But there has to be someone trusted between you guys and the community that helps certain situations going on. Not just, I'm here on behalf of the family of Deborah Terrell, but also not just standing for shooting that just took place on Rimson Avenue with the young kids, a mother that got, you know, killed. And I killed for shot in the leg, protecting her child. My concern is there like a liaison between you guys and the community, someone that's trusted to help get these situations. Everybody don't go to the police, you know. But the community do strive to police certain things on their own, but there needs to be help between the community and the police in those aspects. So that's why I was asking, was there a liaison? Do we have a liaison?
So there's not a particular official liaison? There are people in the community that are trusted. I would hope that we are definitely open to hearing from people as councilpeople, and if people are uncomfortable hearing from us, I think that there are people in the community that, you know, we try to work with everybody, right? So I just want to say publicly that, you know, our email is available. My email is available, and I'm willing to speak and then contact anybody that wants to talk about certain issues.
This is over. That's not an issue.
And I just want to add that it has been, you know, in the past. And although we have some members in the community that they know, they raise their calls and raise their texts. So we always, some of us work in the community and very well. So we see them almost every day. So there's always good to have that dialogue. So we are open. Especially some of us that are really, you know, working there and they are with the community. So emails is fine, phone, whatever it is. I know we have met the community members when they have some concerns. I tried to help, but we can't. Absolutely.
That's all, Catherine. Thank you.
Hi there. I'm from Patterson Street. A few things. You know, one thing that I feel is necessary to raise that no one's brought up yet tonight is that the front doors to City Hall are yet again locked. And this was an issue at the last council meeting. And I asked the council president, "Why is that?" He said, "Because that's what the police wanted." And I said, "Maybe you don't ask many questions. Does that bother you?" "Why is there a sign?" You know, there's people with organized groups that have found their way in because the people know and have been to the school before. But there's lots of people that aren't a part of an organized, coordinated group that might like to be able to attend these meetings and interact with the council and speak to their concerns. And if they go up to the front doors of City Hall and they're locked, and there's no sign, and there's no one directing traffic to the back door, how are they supposed to know how to access this meeting? That seems like a problem to me. And, you know, not only is it not better than the last meeting where the doors were locked, but at least there were some, you know, officers standing around outside to maybe choose to tell people where to go. This time it's worse. There's nothing. So if you don't already know you're waiting around the building, you probably just throw up your hands and you walk away and say, "I guess they don't want to hear from me." So does anyone on the council think that that's a problem?
What I will say is I'll look into it, Mr. Lucas. I'll ask you to implement the protocols, but there should be a very decent way. They're directing people.
Boy, a sign.
Or a sign. So we'll make sure that happens.
And I can promise you that there was neither of those things. I went up to the front door. I pulled on it. It was locked. I looked around. And, you know, as great as it is to have the people that are here tonight attend this, I admit that there are some people, again, not necessarily part of an organized, coordinated group, who would have liked to be here and had their voice heard, who were denied that opportunity because there was no clear way for them to access this meeting. So I wanted to get that out of the way first. And obviously, there are other matters to address as well. I want to say that I fully support what other speakers have brought up. I would like to see the council pass a resolution in support of the Immigrant Trust Act. I'd like to see the council pass a resolution in support of the Climate Superfund Act. That certainly is something that I've talked to the council about multiple times before. But, you know, primarily, I want to broaden the conversation back to Deborah Terrell, because I feel like the response from the council thus far has been lacking significantly. And I do appreciate the council motion for a resolution to urge the state to move quickly at something. And I appreciate that. I'm sure that people appreciate that. But that's not enough. You know, that doesn't do anything to address the problems that we have right here in our community just by asking the state to do their job. What I've asked at several past meetings is that to actually allow for a real conversation for people to be with you, not just by, you know, sending an email and maybe they would not get a response. Because I know it's about fifty-fifty if I hear back from you when I send emails. It's, you know, not enough to just be speaking at you by the microphone as a one-way street, and then you say, "Thanks for your comment", to the next person. That's not a conversation. You know, I've brought up several times now the idea that we should have a town hall for an open dialogue with the community on police reform. And at the last meeting, this was before, you said that you would promise to carry that conversation forward. So I'm asking you directly, any other ideas that you're going to have that?
What I would say is that I spoke to some of the council members on that. And we have been talking to other organizations to see if it's something that we can put together. So that's my view.
So there's ongoing conversation. It's with that you are with other organizations.
To see, to make it happen. I don't know if it's been open, but I'm open to it. I know some others that are, we are open.
Right. And openness is the first step, but it won't just happen by itself.
Absolutely, yeah.
It needs to be enacted at worst. And, but again, I'm very grateful for your request that the police chief attend and the mayor attend, because that is something that we have not gotten in any of the conversations, any of the meetings thus far, as any type of contact with either.
But I'm not going to say that we want to be there. I'm just saying that I'm willing.
And you promised to organize them?
Yeah. In our last, I mean, it's due so to them, I haven't made them be present.
But you promised that you will ask.
Absolutely. I don't have a challenge as to that. It will be there. So, thank you.
Anyone else to pop in?
Good evening, council members. Good to see Mr. Ferguson back here. I got to agree with April, shame on this body for again locking the front door in the rain with no sign. And when I came in the back, Victor Ortiz told me, "Hey, don't make a big deal about it." You know, "We have to, we can only watch one door at a time." There were two guys standing in the middle of the lobby who could have been watching the front door if the point is to count how many people are here for fire safety reasons. It's a joke. You can't hold meetings like this with the front door locked. It's a metaphor for how you treat us as the public, right? If you don't open the door to us, how are we supposed to expect you to serve us, to represent us? And, yeah, sorry, I have to start off by saying shame on you, because that's not okay. And April brought it up at the last meeting, and it's just as bad this meeting, actually worse because it's porn-ridden. I'm glad to see some action in response to the tragedy that happened on August 8th. But critically, the resolution you passed doesn't call for any transparency. And so I want everybody to know that we're coming up on six weeks since police officer Hosway Plaza killed Deborah Terrell. And the attorney general is still keeping Hosway Plaza's name a secret. Will you acknowledge that Hosway Plaza was the shooter who killed Deborah Terrell?
Have we seen it earlier? We said, "Well, we can."
You can, and you should do more. You should say more, and you should demand transparency. This is absurd. And it touches on the other things we've been talking about, right? Like TSRG wants to go around pretending they're secret agents and not give out their names. names. ICE goes around wearing masks and doesn't want to be identified, um, while they're doing, uh, their harm. And the highest law enforcement official in New Jersey wants to keep it a secret, the names of the officers who were there when Deborah Terrell was killed. That is unacceptable, and we demand transparency. I don't know why you're not demanding transparency, you're not even, you know, confirming the name, we know the name, we know all the names. Can you tell us, are the four officers who were present when Deborah Terrell was shot and killed back on active duty, are any of them on active duty?
I can get that to a meeting. Actually, Catherine, do you have any, I know it's a bit scary, but at this point, there's some, uh...
Uh, they're all still employed, Council Vice President.
Yeah, well, that's not acceptable, right? Um, I, I'll, I'll be frank, I was at the scene of the shooting, um, in my neighborhood, uh, last Thursday, and I saw Rodney chatting on active duty, so, are they on active duty or not?
I have to get back to it again, we're not going to comment on personal issues.
Yeah, this is a tremendous problem, it's a huge lack of transparency, we can't even find out if these four officers are active or suspended. Why don't you demand the most basic minimum transparency? A woman's life was taken and we can't even find out whether these officers are active or not? Do you think that's acceptable? Should the public just accept that? It's been almost six weeks.
Appreciate it and I can understand that, which is why we did the resolution today.
Right, the resolution doesn't call for any transparency.
It calls for expediency, and as you know, and we're very well versed in this, that the attorney general is the one that decides, and we're, we're helped, because the attorney general makes the decision.
The attorney general presents the case to the grand jury, but you supervise the New Brunswick police, and you're refusing to tell us whether these officers are active or not, so we just have to go by what we see out in the community, and I can tell you, I saw one of them active, so, that's what I got, I gave you the names of all four, you refuse to confirm them, so you're part of the problem, you're not part of the transparency we need. And, um, you know, I just have to be harsh about it because this is unacceptable, we can't allow this to happen. And, you know, frankly, I think that you should have acted today in support of the immigrant trust act and the climate super fund act as well. Um, would you be willing to just make a motion, get, get that done today, just like you did with the other resolution that you added onto the agenda?
No, I, you know, that, I mean, what we like to do is we like to deliberate, we like to make sure the information that was given on the trust act was given today. And so I'm going to give people on this committee the ability to look at stuff so that they can then see whether we're going to do. It's the same thing that happened in the...
We'll be up close by saying the community needs to keep coming to these meetings and keep building pressure on you because you're not doing what we need. We need you to act, talk is cheap.
Tomell Pittman, uh... New Jersey. Officially, uh, with the immigrant, with the immigrant trust act, I would like you to also focus on a foundational black American reparations for the, for the city of New Brunswick, because the foundational black Americans in New Brunswick deserve reparations. We didn't deal with ICE agents, our ICE agents were the New Brunswick Police Department, that's who terrorized us. So we need a foundational black American reparations, reparations, and the city can fund that, follow that immediately before the confederate. Uh, you said that you're hoping that the attorney general expedite the investigation?
What I stated was that we did a resolution asking the attorney general.
Wait, but when you, when you talk, do you pause when you talk and then I speak, or it's just five minutes?
You're good, all right, I'll stay quiet.
No, 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 I'm saying, no, because you started talking.
I'll be aggressive.
The clock just, no, listen to me, listen to me. You started talking and then the clock kept running, and then when I talk, so it's all part of the five, is your speech part of the five minutes that I get?
No, I will give you your full five minutes.
Okay, so you can talk, go ahead.
Not a bad one, I've said it.
No, you're not getting what I'm saying. I, I would like a dialogue with you, but when I'm communicating with you, then you start communicating, the clock is still running. You can communicate, but is it a part of my five minutes, what you're saying?
I've already asked you, Mr. Crowe.
You didn't ask me.
I said it's not, I said that I won't give you five of the five minutes, so it's, you know, I won't say why.
So what were you, so, so what were you getting ready to say?
I just said what I was going to say, I said, we, I just made sure that we clarified what we did today with respects to the action toward the attorney general.
Okay, well, the attorney general's office, they're now overseeing the investigation because they took it from the prosecutor's office and they took it from the local police department. Here's my problem, some of you guys said it before, prior to 2019, when the attorney general's office was not even involved, and the same statement that you're making now towards attorney general, you made towards the county prosecutor and local police office. It's under investigation, let's give them time to complete their investigation and then we'll contact you after that. But for, for the attorney general office to intervene, there had to be a problem. So prior to 2019, you were mistaken, you were sending us down a rabbit hole because you knew that the local, the police department and the county police department were ineffective, if not, they wouldn't have taken over the cases that deal with police involved shootings. So you're saying the same thing, you're not asking for accountability, because you didn't ask for accountability when it was in the hands of the prosecutor's office and the local police department, you just asked for a quick investigation, just like you're asking now. So do you trust in your request for a quick, at least, a quick investigation or to expedite the case? Because expedite the case still had nothing to do with accountability.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm ready to start.
No, I'm asking, I'm asking, are you going to answer my question or not?
Again, the whole, the whole conversation.
Are you being arrogant?
I'm trying to be...
Are you being disrespectful?
You don't mean disrespectful?
I think so.
I don't see that.
Okay, all right, well, like Mr. Crowe said, I don't know, I don't, I don't know, I'm not too familiar, I don't know if you're New Brunswick resident or not, I don't know if you came from the roots of New Brunswick or not, Mr. Fleming did, I, I, I'll get the tape, I don't think we have, but, um, I think it's, I think it's real disrespectful and disingenuous to the family of Deborah Terrell, but we're not just going to put this focus on my aunt, because I don't think that you guys are qualified to give accountability. Like I said, we just won't even get the police's, police's names, we have all the officers' names. I don't even know how many of you guys actually looked at the tape of a senior being murdered in New Brunswick, did you, did you guys ever have the stomach to look at the tape? Did you guys see what the, uh, attorney general's office put out? Have you guys watched it? Have you watched it? Counsel, have you watched the tape?
I have.
You have? And, and, and do you have an opinion on the tape?
I do, but I can't speak to it.
Why not?
Again...
Your opinion on the investigation.
As long as the investigation's open, I'd be saying all right.
Okay, well, for one, it was five officers, it wasn't four. And I'll tell you, what the attorney general put out, it's not the only thing that we had. The officer that he mentioned, the off, the officer that he mentioned, the officer that he mentioned, the officer that shot Deborah Terrell, Deborah Terrell was shot, tased, and maced. The officer who shot Deborah Terrell was the same officer who tear gassed Deborah Terrell. And was the same officer who handcuffed Deborah Terrell while she was on ground. And it's the same officer who drugged Deborah Terrell down the hallway to the elevator. I have that footage also. That's what the, and it's stuck right before the attorney general's office lets you see that point. So you asking for a quick investigation, they're already being disingenuous, but you should, should, for not letting you see the entire footage of a senior, lifelong resident of New Brunswick being shot, maced, while on handcuff, while on the ground and drugged down a hallway about twenty-five yards. And you're saying that you're comfortable with them giving you a piece of what they want you to know? This might be my, this might be my last meeting that I come here with, because the, because the work I put in is not going to be done here. I'm not going to be seeing you going back and forth, looking at you, you're getting confused faces, I'm not going to be, and I'm not, I don't respect you being afraid to be honest because your handlers are somewhere in this drive. You have an obligation to the community to do what's best, you have an obligation to the attorney general's office, you have an obligation to the prosecutor's office, you have an obligation to the local police department, you have an obligation in the community, and you're violating that obligation every time you sit up there with that dumbass look on your face.
Anyone else to call the council?
Yes.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Julia.
I have to go here and translate, we don't have a translator here in the city council for...
It's fine, we can forget.
Okay, seventy-five percent of the Spanish population, it's something we should consider. But Ola, she said, hello, my name is Monfilia.
Um, estoy aquí de nuevo de regreso para mi comunidad mexicana y toda nuestra comunidad latina y en general.
I've come back here this evening for my Mexican community and in general for the Latino community.
Buenas noches a todos ustedes que están presentes tanto al público como ustedes en la mesa directiva.
So good evening to everybody, to the whole public that's here as well as everybody at the table.
Hay muchas cosas que están pasando en nuestra comunidad y muchos de nosotros emigrantes estamos callados por miedo, miedo a ICE, miedo a la policía, miedo ha salido de nuestras casas sin que nos atranquen.
There's a lot of things that are happening here in the community and the immigrant community is feeling fear, fear of police, fear of ICE, we have a lot of things that are going on and fear of speaking out.
Um, uno de los sucesos que ha pasado, tanto en las escuelas, estamos precisamente malos. Y hemos perdido apoyo y nunca han hecho nada.
One thing I want to talk about is the runs of schools, we are in a really bad place, I've spoken up before about this, but it doesn't seem like anything's happening.
Somos padres, muchos de, muchos de las personas que están aquí a lo mejor son padres con hijos de, de clases especiales, que necesitan un lugar adecuado para estar en una clase especial, cosa que el district escolar no quiere dejar salir los recursos económicos para que los niños vayan a una escuela especial.
Many of the parents here tonight are parents of kids in New Brunswick Public Schools, some of them who have special needs, and our special needs children deserve adequate space and adequate resources, and it appears that the district is holding back funds in order for them to get those adequate resources for their education.
Para los que no me conocen, yo he trabajado para tres diferentes organizaciones, siendo activista comunitaria en mi comunidad y también haciendo radio comunitaria para mi comunidad. Soy Julia Arquín, he pertenecido a Inaya School, a New Labor, y a Proyecto Esperanza, la última administración que estuvo. Manuel, muy buenas noches, Rebecca, buenas noches, y a todos ustedes, muy buenas noches. Estoy aquí porque yo quiero que nos pongamos de acuerdo, la comunidad en conjunto trabajar con ustedes, ¿por qué? Porque queremos cambio, no queremos promesas, ya no más.
Can't find your translator, stop that. Um, so yeah, for those of you who don't know me, I have been worked in many community organizations such as New Labor, um, most recently Proyecto Esperanza, I have also been on community radio, and I'm here tonight so that we can come to agreement with you guys as community, no more promises, we can't have any more promises, we need to come to an agreement here.
Eh, uno de los sucesos que ha estado pasando, los asaltos en la comunidad, a nuestra gente trabajadora.
One of the things is the assaults that's happening in the community, especially on our working class community.
Otra de las cosas que está pasando, eh, sobre las señoras que murió en el, en el asilo, me da pesar, disculpen, estoy con ustedes, porque yo como madre e hija no me gustaría ver un, un suceso de esos, yo creo que deberíamos de trabajar también con nuestros policías, porque no todos son malos, pero necesitaremos trabajar un poco más con la psicología, porque muchas de esas personas que están enfermas usan medicamentos, a la actual época también el, el seguro médico nos tiene estancado todos los medicamentos fuertes para nuestra gente que está con problemas de psiquiátricos y que necesitan sus medicamentos, y ahora tenemos que estar esperando también para recibir un medicamento para nuestros hijos, para nuestros padres o hermanos.
Also, I just want to say my condolences to the family of the woman who was killed by police officers. Um, I am a mother, I have children, and, um, I feel your pain, we are with you. I think also we need to come to an agreement here with police officers and community, I assume that not every police officer is bad, I think we also need access to healthcare for our children and for our community, um, also for our mental health as well, you know, you ask for certain medications and it takes months sometimes to get access to these things.
Um, yo tuve un suceso hace meses atrás, que disfruta si me voy a pasar de la obra. Um...
Well, I have a little bit of time to finish this.
Bueno, soy buena persona, gracias.
But I told him without you, you were, you were going to finish your point and then we could talk.
Bueno, voy a hacer lo más breve posible. Este, yo creo que uno de los recursos que deberíamos usar, como dice la jefatura de policía, que no tienen recursos económicos para poder atender todos los problemas de la comunidad, pues entonces, ¿por qué nos ruego a nosotros, a nuestra comunidad? Que podemos hacer muchas labores para tener recursos para ustedes.
De quién?
La policía. Yo tuve un suceso hace unos meses atrás, en septiembre, al cual yo iba en presa y las personas iban a quedar con mi apartamento, entonces la policía me dijo que no tenían recursos para poder apoyarme a mí, porque los recursos estaban más para la gente emigante que vino de otros países a hacer daño a nuestra comunidad, que eso va, han estado trabajando para esta comunidad, para nuestros puestos.
This is talking about a specific incident where she was having an issue, um, where she was being taken from the home and there she was being told that there aren't sufficient resources in the community to help her, but there's resources for others who have recently arrived into our community but not for her, so she'd like to talk more about community resources, um, for people who've been here for a while and have contributed to New Brunswick City.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you, your time is over, but I can promise you, right after this meeting, we can talk, okay?
Perfecto, esperamos, esperemos que no prometas, cumpla.
Thank you.
Anyone else to call the council? Anybody?
Elder Council Vice President, before you return, there's no more comments, just let me clarify something for the record, you have, but I think it's important, the attorney general investigation into this matter is as a result of New Jersey regulation law. The prosecutor's office and police department are not permitted to conduct the investigation. When a police officer dispenses identity force, immediately this matter will be attorney general's office. Those attorney general guidelines and procedures prohibit this particular city, its officials, the police department, from mentioning anything that they may know about the details of that investigation, or that incident, inclusive of the officer's names. This individual, Mr. Paddle, asks you to confirm or deny, by law, in my opinion, you cannot confirm or deny, so your silence on that issue is not inappropriate. Hopefully, the matter will be, uh, forward to the resolution, um, hopefully the matter will be concluded shortly, but until that time, the council cannot speak about it. One other matter I should bring to the council's attention is that the city has been placed on notice of a civil, potential civil suit against the city as a result of this incident. Additionally, as a result of that, the city, its officials do not discuss this matter in detail in public because of the pending litigation issue. Having said that, I just want to make sure the council is clear, the public is clear about how that all works. Um, can I repeat your motion to adjourn?
Thank you very much for that, I appreciate it. On that note...
Thank you.
And how good is it?
Councilmember Esteban, yes. Councilmember Ferguson, yes. Councilmember Fleming, yes. Councilmembers with Cora Ludwig, yes. Council Vice President Caserina, yes.
Yes.